Okay, this is a meeting of the Lomond Street School Committee. We are at Apple Seeds Restaurant. Would you all join me in salute for the flight? Oh, it's gone, but there's one right up there. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, do we have anybody signed up for a public forum? Beth Ortega, signed up to speak. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Beth Ortega. I'm at 42 Academy Road here in Leominster. I am a mother of three, a taxpaying resident, and a recently displaced resource level special educator here at the high school. I've learned a lot about my town, my school system, and myself over these last few months. At the city council meeting on Monday, Councilor Frida asked, "How did we get here?" It was a great question, but what I want to know is, how do we get out of here and make sure we never come back? This isn't an empty rhetorical question. I want to know, I want to be educated in ways that I can help outside of offering to have my taxes raised. We should all want to help. I think it's shameful when I hear people explain that they shouldn't help because they don't have children in the school system. Or when people say, "Well, the school committee," or "the mayor," or "the superintendent got us into this situation, why should I help?" The fact is, we're all up to our eyeballs in a heck of a mess, like it or not, and why wouldn't we want to work together to help get us out of it and make sure we never come back? It's our obligation as residents or employees of this town to do right by the children. Remember, sooner than later, these children will be the voters. They'll be the police officers, the firefighters, the teachers, the taxpayers. I want to be able to look them in the eye now and tell them that they can trust the adults in charge of giving them what they need, and mean it.
Thank you, Beth. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the school committee?
Hello, everybody. I'm Bernadette Marso. I live at 139 Hampton Street in Auburn, Mass. I'm not here to have any words of wisdom or impart any knowledge that none of you, that any of you haven't thought about or done before. That includes this whole city right now. I just wanted to, I've been to every meeting that I could and didn't want to sit by without saying something. Because, that's why we're here, because our hearts are in our hands. Not only that, our professions, our livelihood, our families, everything we do is in the hands. And I don't envy you one bit, nor the city council. And this decision is the worst I've ever seen in Leominster in my 25 years here, but we've somehow found our way out of it before. We may not be able to find our way all the way out of it this time, but I'm going to ask that you do what you can do. Mr. Mayor, I have to tell you my, I'm an eternal optimist. Somehow I see you before June 30th riding in on your white horse and saying, "Here it is. Here's a couple million."
I don't know if it can be a white horse, but it's probably a mixture between gray and...
Well, I still, I know none of us, none of us, none of us. And it's, you're misinformed if you think anybody wants to see this happen. Of course not. There's been years and decades of heart, soul, spirit, professionalism put into the children of this city. All I ask you tonight is, just make a decision and let people know. All the emails that I've been getting, all the phone calls that I've been getting is, "What's going to happen?" And I don't have that answer, only you do. So please, find it in your hearts, no matter what the decision is, to let people know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the committee? One last time?
Holly Kowski. Hi. I lived in Leominster from 6/1963 until 2007. I just had a couple of other questions after going to all the meetings and hearing that the custodians who have now, they shovel the sidewalks and they salt the sidewalks. And I'm wondering, if you guys do outsource, will the new company do that as well? Is it included in the bid? The activities that take place after school hours, like church and the different sports and things are paid for by those outside vendors. Will the outsourced company do it? And, you know, how much will you have to pay them to do it? Will it be extra? Let's see. What are the extra costs? Does the company provide their own cleaning materials? Or will they be, or will you be contracted to purchase the supplies through them? That could be a lot more expensive as well. The original cutbacks were and are to save money. So if the cost of outsourcing does not save money, please, if you could inform the taxpayers and let us know, because that, I believe, is the whole purpose of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the committee?
Good evening. My name is Denise Slovek. I live at 32 Apple Tree Lane. As I get ready to send my youngest child to high school in the fall, I can honestly say I'm still deeply concerned, particularly after hearing Dr. Lord and Mr. Fiondakis speak at the city council meeting the other night. As it stands now, my son will not be attending the same school that my two children, who just graduated, attended. When they were in high school, it was a Level 1 school. We are now, it is now a Level 2 school, and we are a Level 3 district. With the proposed cuts, whether looking at the school committee submitted budgets or the mayor's budget, there appears to be very little hope of it getting better anytime soon. Who's going to pay the price for this? The teachers, other school employees, but mostly, the students are the ones that are going to pay the price. What's done is done, and I understand that. And so I implore you, mayor, Mr. Mayor, superintendent, school committee members, please, put your differences aside. Find a way to make the cut so that there will be the least minimal impact possible to our students, and hopefully, not leave our school system in shambles. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Anyone else like to address the committee? One last time?
Hi, my name is Kate Keane. I live at 38 Rear Cottage Street in Leominster. I just want to take this opportunity to say that I have four kids, two of whom are in the Leominster schools right now, and two more will be coming along shortly. I have nieces and nephews and friends who have graduated from Leominster Public Schools, so I've been involved in their education and dealing with the schools for about 15, 16 years now. And first of all, I appreciate everything all of you have done. I know it's been a very stressful time and very contentious, and I think that's probably due to the passion and the concern that all of you have for our children. That being said, I think that the time has come to try and look for silver linings. And in this moment of crisis, we have an opportunity, with people focused on the schools, to turn things around and to take that community passion and interest and make something good come of it. And as that process is happening, I would just like to say that I do think that this is a time when we need more transparency in our communication between our schools and the public, just listening to the debate and discussions and forums. There are a lot of questions I've heard people ask that they shouldn't need to be asking, that they should be aware of. There's been a lot of misinformation and arguing about where the money goes, why things have gotten more expensive, why do teachers get paid so much? And those types of questions should be things that people are able to find answers to, so we don't have this kind of misinformation and confusion and anger around the schools, but rather a sense of what their purpose is and how they function and why they're so important to our community, so that we don't end up at each other's throats the next time there's a crisis. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last time? Okay, close this portion of the meeting. And we only really have one item on the agenda, but let me just preface that by saying, superintendent, his team and our team at City Hall have been working feverishly, trying to go over every single line item, everything we possibly can, I ensured that, and reinforced that with the city council. I think I had conversations with almost everybody about that. We're just going to keep working. No vacations for me, we're just going to work through the summer. So, here's how it's going to go tonight. So, the superintendent has a couple of options, all right, based on the budget that was passed. Again, you know, the city council passed the options based on revenues. So, if I was to send on a budget without revenues, they're saying, "Well, you know, we're going to spend X amount of dollars," but I can't pack it up with a letter that says where it was going to come from, then they couldn't pass it anyway. So they were in a very difficult spot the other day. And, you know, it's a difficult spot to be in. There's nobody that I've met that's anti-education, nobody. Everybody wants the absolute best. And so, I like the spirit of what I'm hearing tonight, which is, we've been in worse situations, let's get ourselves out of this, let's make sure this doesn't happen again. And that's the message I've been hearing over and over. I think everyone's had their share of either pointing fingers or trying to listen to us, pointing fingers at each other. That hasn't solved one thing yet. So all that energy went into that, it didn't solve anything. However, as we redirect our efforts and our energies, a couple of things. The superintendent has a couple of different options here that he'll present to the school committee tonight, that he'll be looking for our support on one of them, correct? And then, at the end, I can tell you where we think we've come up with some funds. Again, they're one-time, they're not to be applied to fixed costs, but may free up some dollars that could be put back towards reinstating. So, as you hear these things, please, these are just A, B, or C, and there are different proposals that are in here. So, and that does not take into consideration any restructuring of dollars that we've already done today, because we'd have time to make those. So, I just ask for your patience. Let the superintendent walk the scrutiny and yourselves through it. We'll have some discussion and questions, and then, well, I guess if you have a presentation, I can talk about where we think we can help a little more. As Beth said, she's an optimist. So, on that note, we will begin with the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to walk through the process that we went through the scoop. The city council voted on Monday evening for an appropriation that ultimately included a budget for the school department. We had a meeting of the school leadership team. Many of the members are in the room this evening, so they're here to be able to support any questions that might be had and regadd to these options. So right now, based upon the appropriation that was provided to us by city council, we still have a remaining balance in the budget to reduce of $2,860,090. So we had to really rally our thoughts yesterday to be able to figure out how we're going to take these reductions. Now, you have to remember, in the original budgets that were already presented to school committee, we already had a number of reductions that were already incorporated in there, which included 96.4 full-time equivalents, as well as reductions in athletics, which only funded the varsity teams, 50% reduction in extracurricular activities, other items like 20% reduction in substitute teachers, 20% reduction in classroom instructional supplies, and then the health insurance savings from the reduced staff positions. So, we undertook the task of identifying this so that we could present a number of options to the mayor this afternoon. First of all, the school committee voted not to give administrators within the district any salary increases for FY '18, so we automatically took that off the top of, there was a $30,000 figure that was reduced. We had to take the remainder of the extracurricular student activities and the remainder of the athletics. So right now, as the mayor said, bear with us, based upon the $2.9 million, we aren't offering any extracurricular or athletics. Then we came up...
Sit tight.
Yep.
You've got the whole book.
Yep, you have to see the whole picture.
Ten chapters, the whole book, before a coach dives over the table. Deep breaths.
All right. So, we looked at various options as to how we could deal with these reductions. So, option A was ultimately to focus and convert our scheduling to a totally focused academic schedule, but that academic schedule will eliminate all specials. And in terms of specials, we're talking about art, music, library media, and math specials, which is in mostly elementary schools, a math workshop, period. Now, you have to remember that these specials are important within the ongoing schedule of the schools, because it provides the students with not only a total experience for those who are in content areas, they have the opportunity to be in different areas, as well as to rotate students through to be able to take advantage of different subject matters. So at the elementary level, as I said, it would include art, music, library media, and math. It's a total of 16 FTEs in each of the schools for about $880,000. At the middle school level, this would eliminate all the specials, which in the middle school...
Excuse me, it's 16 total?
16 FTE total, yes.
Right, not at each school?
No, no. FTE total, yes. Four teachers per, times the four schools. At the middle school level, we would eliminate our specials, which in the way we term in the middle schools, they're called like the mini-courses, but it gives the students the opportunity to rotate through various courses during the course of the school year and take advantage of the different subject matters. So, in the middle schools, it would include the elimination of art, music, health, science, technology, engineering, and math, which is our STEM courses, library media, as well as world language, which most of our world language was supported by an online virtual learning platform called Ingenuity, which gave students a plethora of different options for world language. So at Skyview, this is a reduction of nine FTE teachers and one FTE, FTE meaning full-time equivalent tutor, for a total of 521,000. At Sammerson, a reduction of seven full-time equivalents, for a reduction of 385,000. At Leominster High School Center for Technical Education, we include both of those schools only because they share a master schedule and pretty much operates this entire campus. And those reductions would be made to music, drama, we have some combined courses of media, drama, art, a portion of world language, and health courses, for a reduction of 13 full-time equivalents for 585,000. So, the total of all those reductions comes to 2.4 million, approximately 2,371,000, which you have to remember, our reduction number is 2,860,000. So it brings us pretty close to the total reduction we would have to make. So that's option A. Option B is just looking at different factors as to how we do the reductions. In option B, we would eliminate two kindergarten classrooms, which would eliminate two full-time equivalent teachers and two full-time equivalent paraprofessionals for $150,000. And then by formula, we would eliminate, in this term, X number of positions per level. At the elementary level, we would reduce an additional four full-time equivalents per school, once again, 16 teachers, middle school, and additional five full-time equivalents per school, which is 10 FTEs between the two schools for 550,000. And at Leominster High School Center for Technical Education Innovation, an additional 18 full-time equivalents, for a total of $990,000. And each of the principals have submitted priority lists of personnel that they would be reducing under these options. So option B, the total reduction, is $2,570,000. Option C is a little bit more innovative in its approach, but it would reduce school budgets by a factor of $430 per student based upon the population of the school. So depending upon, you know, relatively minor fluctuation between the elementary schools, but more of a dramatic fluctuation between the populations at the middle schools and then, of course, the high school. So roughly, with the 6,000 students that we have in the school district, $430 times 6,000 equals $2,580,000. Kind of, option B and C decentralizes the decision-making for reductions to each principal. So they will look at their schools, look at their cultures, look at their capacities, and identify reductions accordingly, which many of them, as I said, have already identified lists as to how they would approach this. And the only caution I bring to the committee is that you have been very adamant about having consistency of the reductions across the buildings. I can't guarantee that consistency under the decentralized versions, because the principal's going to have to do what they need to do based upon the reductions. And once again, they've submitted those priority lists. Now, other alternatives, we wanted to make sure that the mayor and the committee had some other alternatives that we had looked at, some duplicate, some of the items that have already been brought up by the committee. But in some cases, if we, all of these will have some type of impact bargaining with unions. And that takes time, and we don't really have the luxury of time right now if we want to start to identify where we're going with the reductions and start to call a number of the teachers back who have already received non-renewal letters. But we wanted to provide these options anyways. Eliminate steps and lanes for teachers, eliminate 2% salary increases for teachers, many of these have already been communicated to the unions. Eliminate salary increases and step increases of the other unions, including Unit B. Creating a rolling schedule process, and these were some suggestions that came in from either representatives within the school community or the external community. This would create a rotating schedule for teachers to take responsibility for duties and eliminate the duty aides that are in the building. That is, right now, five duty aides per elementary building, plus two in early education, plus one in Skyview, so it's 23 individuals, and we approximated their salary for about $188,000 savings. As well as, depending upon what we do with world language at the middle schools, then we would reduce the cost of the Ingenuity virtual platform for those particular courses. So those are the three options and some of the alternatives. We met with Glenn Prado, who's the new school business administrator, and myself met with the mayor and his financial team through some deliberations this afternoon, and I'll turn it back over to the chair for further discussion.
For those city councils that are here, because we met right up until almost the time that it took to get here, I weren't able to update you, so I apologize, but we didn't want to miss this opportunity, so I shared this. So, as we're going through the process, in trying to identify areas that are not really fixed cost, so they're one-time, and they're not salary-related, so they're not, it's not somebody's salary, it's not anything that's fixed cost. So we identified a couple of areas, one in the area of $800,000 that the city could, again, subject to the appropriation and confirmation of the city council, about $800,000. And one area that we could use towards, that would free up funding for the superintendent to put positions back, so back into, you heard just option A, B, and C, would put some of those back into it. And again, those calculations would have to be done, probably not tonight, but at some point. And then another area of about $500,000, which is really the sports programs, those after-school programs, because they really, as much as we think of them as fixed costs, they're not. They're contractual in the sense that there are stipends in there, but the programs aren't by contract, in other words, the program itself isn't by contract. It isn't, you know, we must have these programs. So, we think we can help in that area, and that comes, that could be 350, that could be 400,000, but another commitment of half a million dollars that again, could be put back into other areas that the superintendent could free up to put back towards other areas. So that's another 1.3. In our original budget, it was 1.2 million, more than last year, well, including net school spending, and then the overall, net school spending was about a half a million. We put 700,000 on top of that, brought it to 1.2. So the two together is about 2.5. Now, that doesn't mean that that 2.5 comes off the 2.8, but it certainly gets us a little closer. And that's just, that's just today, and, you know, today's Wednesday. So, my approach is the optimistic one, the one that's finding out how we can do things better in ways to get this resolved. And so that's where we are. And all the nuts and bolts aren't there exactly yet in terms of where those funds will go, but those are the areas that we identified that are not fixed cost. So, one-time money, a fixed cost, is just going to get us back into this problem again, but one-time money for these costs that are not fixed, that are one-time, or looked at as one-time, would certainly free up some money for the superintendent to put back into some of these positions. Any questions from anybody in the committee?
So, we're talking 1.3 million dollars we can get back, or Jim will have the ability to use to reinstate some of the positions?
Well, let me try to explain this. I overcomplicated this. So, the funds that we could help out with, go back to the superintendent, in one area would be used to free up, so he's using some of the budget for one-time money, for a one-time cost, then that cost goes away next year. What we said is, let us incur that cost. That frees up 800,000 to put back towards positions. The other area that we found that is one-time, for the after-school programs, the extracurricular sports programs, you know, the after, I think it was the after-school...
Extracurricular and athletic.
Whatever it was, there's a half a million dollars. And again, we're still on, and we're still going to work this out, but that's another 1.3 million closer to this area. And again, I know, we negotiated with the teachers and the unions, I get that, just, maybe there's help in other areas. We're at day two after the budget's passed. And so, and, you know, at a meeting I was at with other mayors today, they were in the same situation, they were just going to work through the summer, they all had shot balls, they're going to look for alternative ways to come up with it. And again, I think we got off to a good start. After the budget was passed, we know what we're dealing with, and from there, it's building from there. And that's, so that's where we are today.
So are you looking for us tonight to approve one of these options, or Jim?
Yeah, I think at this point in time, you know, based upon an extensively long day yesterday, working with the school leadership team, we have a very, very strong desire to start to contact teachers. You have to remember that we pretty much blanketed non-professional status teachers with non-renewal letters, which we were required by law in order to do that by June 15th, as well as we notified a subset of paraprofessionals, a subset of tutors, as well as other targeted individuals who were on the reduction list. So they had specific positions, specific letters. So what we would like to do is be able to get into an implementation mode where we can start calling teachers back, once, based upon a priority list, which I gave copies to each of you this evening. Those were just drafted by the principals and were delivered via email to me up until 3 o'clock this afternoon. So that is fresh off the press. We still have work to do, but I wanted to make sure that the school committee had copies of those. But we would like to, you know, as the mayor said, keep the ball rolling on this, the obvious positions that we know that we can identify and get people back so that it doesn't impact certain elements of the operations of the schools. We'd like to be able to do that, but I can't do that without the authority of the school committee at this point.
And one other thing, that number that you see for the 430, reduction would be less, so that, in other words, if you don't all have a copy... so that, in other words, if you don't all have a copy, option C was to basically give it to the building managers and then let them sort of prioritize this, and that would be reduced from, so we wouldn't have to reduce it by 430, it would be 300 even, so we'd save a hundred and thirty dollars per student times six thousand students. So that's, that's pretty considerable. I mean, I'll just say this, I favor option C only because, I don't know, I mean, when I look at these other numbers here, Skyview and Reduction, I'm full-time equivalent in one, two, I don't know enough about the mechanics as I walk through the schools, but that doesn't, that doesn't provide me the ability to say what goes on in the school. I'm more in favor of the PTOs or the, you know, the various committees within the schools, and that, those individual groups to decide how to run it. And I've always, I think everyone knows I've always been that way, give them the budget and let them prioritize. If they want to teach in a particular way, then I'm all for it. None of these schools has to be the same, but that's my opinion. Wendy had her hand up first, and then Suzanne.
Yes, so I just want to say a couple of quick things. I've spoken at the city council meeting, so I've been very outspoken and critical of the budget, so I want to say that I'm appreciative of the fact that you are coming to the table and trying to help that. So I've been critical when needed, I want to make sure to say thank you when needed. I was going to say what you started to bring up is, whatever option, whatever we do, I'm not for making the decisions and having it be equal around the district. I'm very much a believer that every building principal knows their population of students, and they're not the same in each building, and whatever we do...
Wendy, we agree?
Yeah, isn't that funny? Isn't that weird? Yes. There's no lightning, right?
Class size.
Yeah.
And a rainbow.
They, they know their students, so they know what they need, and each building has a different need, so we need to trust the principals and the teams in each building to know what those students need, and it will not be the same across the board, so their staffing, what they keep can't be the same. I also think that we need to figure this out tonight, because the sooner we can start to have teachers back, the sooner the principals can make their schedules and people can know what they're doing. The last thing, I just want to make sure at some point we touch on the transportation issue and how that's going to be handled.
I could do that right now, real quick. So we looked through some of the areas here so that we'll get the reimbursements back. Glenn's been working hard to try to get more than we typically do, that'll come back. We've got to get some, we have to change the bus routes in terms of how they were, we know, everyone's agreed on that, and then there might be some deficiencies there, and we'll work on that. That's like...
It's not forgot, is what I'm making sure.
Right, we picked this up and put it aside on the transportation, because there's still work that needs to be done on that, that's ongoing.
I just want to make sure it was on the radar and not...
None of this other money I talked about tonight is going towards transportation.
Okay, I think that's it for now.
Suzanne, and then Noel.
So Jim, what would your recommendation be, option C? Because that was my first as well, because I can't support eliminating the arts.
No, absolutely not.
We worked very hard to preserve the arts, and there's no way I would support that. So your option C would be your preferred?
Yeah, no, we had a great discussion on that yesterday. We have very, very high-level building managers as well as assistant principals in each of the buildings, they know their buildings. We kind of came up with that factor in order to move towards that decentralized version. The only thing that I cautioned them on was that the committee had been very adamant about consistency across the buildings. That's why I made the point in the memorandum as well as verbally that I can't guarantee that consistency, but I think Wendy spoke to that, and I believe that at this point in time, that's our best option, to be able to decentralize and give the building managers the ability to do what they need to do under these circumstances, so.
Noel, and then, and then Kobe.
And then we can go right. And then... I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that we're here, working together to fix this solution. I just kind of want to know, kind of where do the principals feel? Do they feel that option C, out of these options, is the best? Or, because I see, I see in some of these notes that some say that this is a devastation, and, you know, and what their opinions are about the ones, what's the consensus of the principals on which one they feel is the best? Right. And...
You pick your poison, they're all awful.
I know, I know, I know they're not all good, but, which is the lesser of three evils, you know, that's, that's...
As managers, you've got to, you're in charge of, I don't, listen, I've never gone to a, I've never gone to a teacher, anybody, I go to the principal. The buildings, the principals are in charge of their buildings. I've always said it from day one.
And since this is...
Give them the budget and...
And since this is the first time we're seeing this, my other concern is, you know, we don't, I don't see that there's a listing of, other than schools, where reductions are being made, and the, and the cost savings of those reductions, kind of, i.e., your office, Jim, you know, at the superintendent's office, the complete thing. We all, we all should be feeling this pain.
I think on the behalf of the elementary school principals, if you could give us the flexibility of a combination between B and C, so that we would have the flexibility as long as we meet that bottom line, I think that's what we would ask for.
Can I ask some questions, Ron Todd? Can we go on to the question? I'm just curious how that would, giving a combination of B and C, differs from just saying that, well, I guess because of the more specific positions, but really, I think we want to trust you guys to know what's best in your building with the money available and not pin you to, except for cutting art, music, and all of those, those I can never, I would never vote for, ever. But I guess if, you know, you guys know your buildings, you need the autonomy to decide what your building needs, and yours not in relation to Francis Street, and not in relation to Ballpark, and vice versa, so I don't think that...
So we could, we could give them the flexi, we could vote to give them the flexibility.
Right.
To, so in other words, if one school wanted to do it one way and another, they could take from the menu and move it around any way they want.
Except for A, which I would not...
Right, no, 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 I'm saying, option B and option C...
Just being clear on not option A.
Okay, is that what you're saying? I think, I think what was being said was the combination of the two, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, the more flexibility they have, the more tools.
Is that what you're asking for? And, yeah, I just think...
Paul, on your head, one way or another, anything, anybody, building managers, are we moving in the right direction if we give you B and C and you decide how to, just something simple if I may?
Can you come up, please?
Could you come up to...
Chair, could we just invite any principals who want to speak to come up at this point?
Well, what I was going to say is, each principal speaks for themselves, so I don't want you to say something and them to think, well, so that's why I think the more flexibility we can give you, the better, but go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Principal Francis Street School, Andrew Zavala. Very simple thing, after listening to what some of the pieces have come to place tonight, what I would ask with regards to that flexibility is a bottom-line number, because that's what's going to allow me to make those two combinations. So just to keep it clear, once we add the pieces back into the formula that came out tonight, if I can have a bottom-line number, then that'll give me that.
And I think that's what we're saying.
Well, I'm sorry, if it's option C, then it's three hundred dollars, then we reduce the per-student cost by three, three hundred.
Instead of the four...
And then you, but B and C are a combination of the two.
I was wondering if the money's put back in place would impact that or not?
Well, it is impacted because we lowered the reduction per student in...
Five hundred and thirty dollars, so you have that much more per student.
For the amount of money that the mayor is recommending that goes back to restoring teacher positions.
Correct.
That's the eight hundred thousand.
So that would impact that?
That impacts that per-student amount.
The math on it is it takes it from 2.5 to a reduction of 1.8, so it goes from 430 a student to 300 a student.
There you go.
Yes.
But if somebody proposes something here, that's a combination of the two, but we allow it, that's up to, between you and the superintendent.
Right.
And I know you just had two days, but maybe you have another warning of, how do you do this? I can't tell you how to do it, you're the ones that run the building, I really have to leave it up to you. I don't know.
Someone's work clear on that amount.
Yes, I, I just don't know enough about, you know, physics, but I lead. I don't know enough about, you know, the day-to-day, the finite details.
Yep, that's all. Thank you.
And I just want to make sure that I'm already agreeing with Wendy, that we don't, we don't cut the arts programs, the music programs, those things, those are so critical in the lives of children.
Well, I know, but we're going, but on there, we're telling them that we've got to give them the flexibility to do the job, so.
But at a practical point, we're all talking all the time about our, our level of our schools, and it is, it is an unarguable fact that kids who are exposed to art and music score better on those academic tests. So if you're not swayed by what's important to kids and makes them happy, it'll also help the test.
I know, but I'm saying is, we can't just tell them, we can't say, instruct them to, listen, here, we want to give you the flexibility, and then say, oh, but, and I think they're in agreement with us, but I'm just saying, we have to give them the flexibility. If we don't, then we start making it conditional. I assume they're in sync with what we're saying. Cody was next, and then, and then back.
I guess essentially I want to echo, you know, I agree with the general committee, I think option C makes the most sense. You know, those on the front lines can make the best decisions as to how to minimize the impacts of these cuts.
Yep, it's working.
But, you know, I really, I guess, mostly what I have to say is covered, I'm more interested to hear from the principals.
Well, thank you for asking us. Paula Deacon, principal of Fallbrook Elementary. Steven, go ahead.
Hi, Steve Maloney, Fallbrook Elementary.
So one of the problems we're having is trying to pigeonhole what the task is in front of us. So trying to hold us to Plan A, B, or C, it's nearly impossible right now. We're trying to be fair and equitable, which does not look like equal, totally two definitions. And our schools all need something a little bit different based on what we have. Holding us to Plan C is a little too tight at the elementary level. The cuts could be a little bit larger for us, where we're feeling like we don't have levels to cut. We are asking for flexibility within our buildings, please come in, talk to us. I feel like this is the first time we've had a voice during this process, so please feel free to speak to any of us at any point in time about what our individual needs are, but we are looking for flexibility, complete flexibility.
And I think that's what we're trying to say, is that we need to trust you...
You can add A, B, and C.
I'm going to have to.
Go back to...
I think that...
Working it out.
Once it gets back to our, in our court, meeting with the superintendent and having those discussions, and giving the superintendent flexibility to work with option C, I think that would be a good course of action. I do want to make sure that everyone understands, though, option C, that's in addition to the cuts, to the original cuts on page two.
Right, yeah, that's understood, yeah.
And central office and other things, not just building, have a big part of that. So I don't, I don't want to think that that's not there. We've discussed that in our group. So it's not, the number of cuts is still significant, and I appreciate the work that the city has done to come forward and to, to help this thing, and so hopefully we can get back on track, and I do appreciate that. But we're still talking significant cuts, and the flexibility within the building to look at our needs, look at our populations is critical, so thank you.
And we're saying, who knows the buildings better than you? Who knows the parents better than you? So through the summer, as you speak with parents, engage with people, I'm at a loss of, you know, when I go in there, everybody's doing a great job, I love every one of those programs, I couldn't begin to tell you, you know, in the priority list, I don't, you know, I'm not there like you are, you know?
So one of the, the issues that I'm having as building principal, when we look at it, I keep hearing this term about simple math, this isn't about simple math, this is about people. So I, I don't want to just take a number of students and divide it by a number, and what's in the buildings, because it does impact everybody in the district.
But what we're saying is, we're leaving that up to you. In other words, here are some ideas.
C feels a little...
Too tight.
Too tight for me, and it feels like it's, the complete burden's on the schools. And we're a district, we're not just buildings.
What about B and C?
B I feel more comfortable with, and, like I said, flexibility.
Steve, same thing, kind of.
I'm okay with C, if the superintendent has that flexibility to then readjust a little bit as we get deeper into the process.
Yeah, I think we're saying, whatever you're comfortable with, we're trying to give you the tools. Mr. Ron, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a bunch of little questions. I am leaning towards C. Flexibility, they're going to be needing some flexibility, like she was saying.
Ron, can you use the microphone? You guys have good, it's a microphone.
All right, sorry about that.
Some of us are.
I lost my train of thought.
We can come back to...
No, no, it's okay. What I wanted to ask, with these cuts that are being done, as Steve was saying and you were saying, how much, one, is that going to increase the class size versus...
Significantly.
Over, at capacity or extended beyond one cut?
Five, five beyond our recommended numbers that we're trying to get to, so the elementary...
That would be what?
At the elementary level, numbers should be, will be between 25, 28 students in a classroom.
In the elementary?
Not all grade levels, but, I mean...
That's like an average.
Yeah, it's, it's tough to say until we finish the process, but...
And depending on the building.
Those are some estimates that I've got today.
Depends on what?
Depends on the building.
Depends on the building. I would say Fallbrook would be at 30-plus, with five classrooms cut.
As I know there was, you know...
Did we say that, 30-plus?
Fallbrook, five classrooms cut, I would be 30-plus.
And that's with option C, right?
And anything.
No, Ron.
That's anything.
Okay, I just beg my indulgence, I'm trying to follow this.
If I cut five classrooms right now, if I cut five classrooms right now, I would be starting at 30 pluses.
Okay, and I know, as we were all saying, the big buzzword had always been equity, you know, making sure all the schools now, and we're all, all of a sudden, we're talking about not having equity. Now, how's that, my, we're not going to have the same amount of acts falling in the same different...
That is equity, you're talking about equality.
Equality.
We want equity.
But how, you know, how's that going to affect the kids going from elementary to middle to high school?
And that's our concern, and that's a process we're working on as an elementary team to, to look at equity versus quality.
Right.
And if we have the flexibility to do that, that's all we're asking for.
Now, Mr. Chairman, you gave us these numbers, 800,000, 500,000, come on to 1, 300,000. Is that hard and fast, or is there the possibility that more money could come in if it needs to be done?
There's, well, first of all, there are a number of things that haven't happened, right? We don't know the final numbers for the rolling, we don't know, the state still hasn't passed that budget yet, so those are just two things that are still out there, and we don't know, we don't know, in other words, that balance between new students coming in and the ability to create another classroom, to say, you know, we've got 30 kids coming into Fallbrook, and they seem to be in the right class, you know, they seem to be in the second grade, we can add another teacher, which takes off. So all those variables are out there, I mean, what do I add kids to classes, sorry, 30? But if there's ability to bring in more money from school choice, then that gives us the option to be able to move that around. So there are a couple of things that aren't out there yet, and we're at day two. This is day two after the budget passed. So this is a summer-long project here, this isn't, you know, tonight's the end of it, this is the very beginning of it.
Because the other part, what I had over here, we were talking about kindergarten. Somebody mentioned about the kindergarten.
It's two classes, Ron, that could be eliminated.
Okay, so eliminate those two kids, those two classes, how many kids do we talk about personally, and what's going to happen to them?
Well, there's...
I'm just asking, guys, I just... As you said, they're not numbers, they're kids, what's going to happen?
At the end of the day, Ron, one cut, size goes up. Two cuts, it's, we're just at that point right now, we're sort of in survival mode, just looking for some answers, so that as administrators and managers of our buildings, we can get the ball rolling. The summer isn't as long as people think it is, this is our busiest time, and right now, we are stuck. We don't have answers for people, we can't put schedules, classlets, anything. So anytime one is cut, the numbers are going to go up, impact is going to be larger and larger and larger. So we have to take from somewhere, we just need a decision on where to take it from.
You know what would be helpful, I mean, not to add work, and I know we have, kind of have it, is, if we could get like a snapshot of each school, who works in those schools? Totally, I mean, who are they, you know, how many?
I think you have that.
Yeah, but, I mean...
In our profiles.
Like a, just a snapshot, quick kind of reference sheet, just extract that, because what we have is... what we have is piles, I mean, I have piles of everything in my office, it looks, you know, it looks like Wall Street. Just a whole, right, and then it gives us just a quick snapshot of each school.
Easy.
Yeah, that's really helpful to, to be able to concentrate on.
I know, okay, I'll test. Okay, Dean, these are the things from every person in high school.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'm going to ask you, pretty pleased, to give it to Kristen and she can mimeograph it.
Me, Chris?
Chris over there. Suzanne, you got a question?
It's a way to save money if we have to mimeograph.
All right, okay, I get it.
I could see where option C would be a challenge for some administrators where some of our programs has special needs students and, you know, the weight of cutting that dollar amount in those classrooms just doesn't make sense. So I do appreciate, you know, the administrators coming forward and saying they want an option C. What's the impact on the high school and CTEI? You know, I'm reading this and I don't know what that means.
Okay, Glenn first.
Can I just touch upon comments made by Principal Maloney? I want to make it clear to everyone that the discussions that occurred today and just occurred all day yesterday with the leadership team was not based on the budget that you recommended, was it the priority plus budget where you added back positions? The starting point was the budget that was proposed initially by the superintendent. So everything you added back, the $932,000 you added back, that's not there, those positions are gone. It goes back to the priority budget the superintendent recommended, which included 96.4 full-time equivalent reductions. And what's being proposed tonight, or originally proposed as of yesterday afternoon, was a reduction of an additional 46 staff members if they were all teachers. Hopefully they won't be teachers. If it's two paraprofessionals instead of a teacher, that saves the same amount of money. But you're looking at a minimum of 142.4 full-time equivalents. What the mayor has offered generously tonight is funding that would reduce the number of proposed teacher reductions that are included in discussions we had yesterday. Would have been of 142.4, 82 of them would be teachers. As proposed about 20, 40 minutes ago, that number's reduced to 66 teachers. Still a lot and it represents, just for clarification, it was 13 to 15% of our teaching force. So just to have an idea why it is so difficult for the principals to sit here and tell you what they're going to do.
And don't leave, don't leave.
Oh, can I still?
Yeah, but I didn't want him to leave because I have a question for you.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Did you, you know, did you have a question for the other than Glenn?
Yeah, in general, I, I wanted to, right, I want to know the impact of the high school and CTEI and, you know, the other thing, we talk about being creative and innovative and I heard the plea for CTEI, we have all this state-of-the-art equipment and we're doing a lot of work for the city, for outside people, you know, why don't we look into raising the prices of what we charge for people because I've seen the work, oh, sorry, I've seen the work that you do and I mean, again, revenue is, is tight.
We'll get the students to unionize, yeah.
No, but, but, but I mean, really, I, I haven't heard that in all these discussions and, and I'm thinking, you know, we really need to look at that because you do have the ability to, I just saw a calendar that you shopped in and I'm like, what did they charge you for it? And, you know, those are the types of things people have to pay for the services that you provide. So, that was my thing.
I want to echo what Sue's saying because I asked the superintendent that and I'm going to ask both, both of you that, is, is there a law with the Department of Ed that says we cannot charge for labor services? Can we, you know, I'm thinking that, you know, the work, the work that we do throughout the city, we should be able to charge for that. We should be able to charge for when the band wants to go play someplace or is asked to go play someplace. I know several, well, it's probably longer than several years ago because I was still working here, the secretaries' union had a Christmas party and we asked the band to come play, which they gladly did and I said, how much are you going, how much is the fee for that? And they said, oh, we don't charge anything if you'd like to make a donation, which we gladly did, but we, we should be charging for that. But I don't know if there's a state law that.
Okay, so first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everybody and in that same spirit of optimism, we're grateful for the first steps that we're seeing here tonight and quite frankly, it's a big sigh of relief and I think that we got the ball going in the right direction. As far as CTEI is concerned, personally, I was very much encouraged in the last two days when we were working with the central administration team and all of the principals and there was agreement among them that our teachers that work in our shop areas should go back. And the truth of the matter is, we can't do what we do without those teachers. And I know many of them right now are on pins and needles because they, they gotta, they gotta provide a living and, and they're, it's hard for them to wait this out. So I am encouraged by this and I hope that we can get a green light and get them back in our system before they find other work.
And that's why we're trying to move so quickly is before people find other jobs.
Right, and we appreciate, and I mean that, I mean that very, very much. My stomach will feel a lot better when we put those people back on and I think everybody will feel a lot happier and, and then we will just continue to do the things that we do to try to help out the city and the rest of the schools. And we'll look into that thing about charging, but we hate to charge one another. I mean, charging, charging outside sources, that's a different story and it's something we will definitely consider. Thank you very much.
I want to echo what Dave has shared with you here. Thank you very much for taking these really important first steps. We've had some of the conversations that you alluded to already with specific numbers and have created a list of priorities for us based on the positions that we can bring back. We were initially planning on about 36 positions being lost. Just to give you an idea of how that would look, the master schedule is done, the guidance council is finished today, so we have a schedule ready to hand out with all the students now. And we are planning on mailing them home with report cards in the next couple of days so the kids get an idea of what they're going to take. Now, what that would, what that would mean for the students is, at this point, we built it based on the priority plus budget that the school committee approved. What the kids would see is a tentative schedule, wouldn't have any teachers' names on the app, wouldn't have any room saying, these are the classes we're tentatively planning. And what we would do is we would start based on wherever you land over the summertime conversation, we'd be basically creating their classes back for them. I will make communication to the community that will say, these are your tentative schedules, kids. You should be prepared however, if we can't bring back enough teachers to fill all your classes, that the class will just turn into a study hall. And the kids will report to the auditorium during that timeframe when there would be a teacher in the classroom. So as many teachers as we can bring back will be creating classes in that area. And we've got a list, we have 36 people ready to go and we're just going to push it back as high as you can possibly go and move us in that direction. That's structurally how it's going to work and that's, that's where we're headed for the high school. So whatever you plan, we can adapt to it. And yeah, thank you so much for taking a first step. We've just pulled 10 teachers back in, so we're looking at about 26 positions now, based on these numbers, so just our team. And our team can work with that. It's not where we need to be, but it's much better.
And I was hesitant to get into any details.
No, I don't.
Just because this thing is evolving and we just got through, we just left there and brought to our cars and came here, trying to come up with as much as we possibly could. So it's, it's still evolving.
Thank you very much.
Get some impact on class sizes, class sizes, just so you're aware of it, right now there's 139 classes that are at 30, about 720 classes that we have academically, so we're looking at about, you know, 20, 20, 20%, at capacity. There's eight or 10 of them that are over 30. The PE classes are all right at 34, 35. There's another about 150 classes that are 26, 27, 28. So there may be half of the classes that we already created are, are, are just jamming and there's very little flexibility for new enrollments at this, at this time. But, you know, we don't know where it's going to land, but that's where it is right now.
Chris, just gym classes?
35.
Five days a week?
Five days a week for gym at this time.
Are you thinking of going to three days a week and two-day study halls?
We're not thinking about that at this time because what we've been doing is awarding credits for students that weren't taking class and that's.
What about, what about the online, I mean, we talked to the superintendent, we'll talk more about it, it's 50,000 a year, but, you know, getting an idea of how many Chromebooks we can hand get to people and at least they can take courses.
Correct.
Online.
That's a solution that we.
Might be, not the ultimate, but certainly nothing that would replace a teacher, but it might be, you know, an enhancement, right? Okay, thank you, yes.
Just, sorry, one question for you gentlemen, just to clarify, do you have a preference in terms of option A, B, and C? I know none of them are ideal, but which do you like?
I mean, if you can give us some of that flexibility, I think that's really helpful. Got a great team here, we know the culture really well and I think that we can make a great decision together that would, you know, have minimal impact on the classroom. I mean, I'll be honest with you, that's where, we're trying to keep teachers in the classroom first. Those are the folks at the top of our list for maintaining and support staff are next, pairs, tutors, counselors, social workers, you know, just trying to be honest with you folks, that's where we go next. That's actually also a very important part, but we've got to get teachers in the classroom to get the kids to.
So we heard from elementary and high school on that, can we just have the middle schools chime in on that flexibility piece?
We didn't hear from the, the pre-K and kindergarten.
Tim Blake had a personal issue tonight, but Colleen is here.
Can Colleen just chime in real quick because we don't know how long.
I just want to know, did you say something about AP classes?
AP classes are currently in place, except for two.
Think how many kids are in there?
AP classes are big.
They, they in what way?
They're like, you know, 27, 28, 29.
And how much are you usually carrying?
Usually, the AP classes are somewhere between 10 and 20, depending on AP class. They're all, they're all pretty packed.
Okay, I know this is a silly question, my, my, how, do you, anyone out there have any idea how that's going to impact them and the different subjects that are in AP?
I have great teachers there, maybe they're just going to be working with more kids. We don't know how that lives. It will be different because they will be on that one-on-one time. If we just about cut about half that one-on-one time that is for the teacher, then that is probably. It only takes 60 minutes in a period, that's two minutes for kids.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That's great, okay. I would echo what my colleagues have been saying, if we had a choice between all of these, B and C would probably be the best for Tim and I and we have talked about that a lot today. We've been trading notes and going back and forth. Obviously his school is a lot larger than mine, so if we were to go with just scenario C, he would be losing many more people than I would. If we combined the two of them, we would definitely be pretty much in the same ballpark as far as programming and different things that we would have to look at.
So that flexibility would be.
The flexibility is huge and I would echo my other colleagues when they said that our number one job, and I can speak for Tim because we were both adamant about this, is to keep teachers in front of students and keep the classrooms.
And the class size would be as, just like they were saying, a little Jesus.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what Tim's would be, but I, I've been playing around with my numbers all day today and based on the different ones, they could range anywhere from 27 to 32 or they could be down as low as 24 depending on if we had that flexibility.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Colleen.
Sue, did you have other questions?
I did. I, I wanted to just speak for my colleague Eileen Griffin who's not here tonight and she asked me to express her concern about eliminating athletics and the extracurriculars, so I'm sure she'll be happy to hear that some of that will be reinstated, but I wanted to echo her concern.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Glenn can come back up, I, we lost Che.
I think you went to get water.
Okay.
That's it. Okay, so could you please tell us, okay, so there was the, the budget requested, then there was the budget that we passed and now it's the budget we have. This 2.8 puts some back on top of the budget we ended up with. How far off, can you just give us a dollar amount, how far off we still are from what we passed?
The budget that is, that is included in this memorandum suggests a reduction of $2,860,000. If you add, that excluded what you had put back in, which is just under a million. So it's $3.8 million less than what you had recommended.
3.8, and this puts back 1.3?
Yes.
And that's with the 1.2 million, the new money for this year. So your structural deficit was like $9 million this year, that's.
But we're still 2.5 off of the budget we passed.
See?
I think it's that, I think it's to that. All right, there you go.
See, I can be blamed for all of these.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to have that number, so we're still 2.5 off what we were hoping.
What the school, 2.5 million dollars off of the priority plus budget that the school committee recommended.
That's huge. While this, while, I mean, obviously any money back is great, but that's still a lot. I mean, is there any, I'm, I'm wondering if you, if this is coming to the table, is it just the beginning or is this it? Or is this the?
I think you, you're talking about page four with the other alternatives?
No, 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 I was just getting the dollar, like, so there was the budget that we passed and then the budget that ended up being in front of city council that they passed. So with the money you came to the table with today, we're still 2.5 million off the budget that we passed as a school committee submitted to you. So I guess my question for you is, this 1.3, which is great, is this, is this, you've come to the table of this and now we're trying to figure out how to make this work to the best advantage of our kids. Will this conversation go on further and is there the chance for more of that late, as?
Well, I, I think there are two areas that we don't know about is the state budget. Last year it was $550,000 extra in addition to, which we were talking today, in addition to means that was built into the budget this year, so it really wasn't 1.2, it was 1.7 million that you've got in new money. Because it wasn't, it wasn't built into last year's number.
Right.
So let's take that, so you're getting 1.7 and then 1.3, so it's actually larger than that, the total amount. Because the 550, the 500 from last year wasn't built in to the budget. We got it later.
I guess my bottom line question is, is, is tonight the start of, of working on this or is this it?
I think I said it.
I just, I want to clarify.
I think I said it, no.
I hear you, so if you did.
I think what I said is, it's, it's a summer long, as long as it takes, you just keep going through it and through it and see other areas that maybe we can find.
So this is not it?
Is there grant funding maybe that, you know, can a grant, are there grants that could pay, are we in for grants? I don't know that, are we in for grants that might pay for positions? It's all evolving. But I can't make any promises tonight because I can't, I, I don't know that.
Well, you can promise to sit and work with us and, and try and come up with ways to help.
That's what we've been doing. If you come to my office, it doesn't look like the city, it doesn't look like the mayor's office, it looks like school. I mean, everywhere, the whole entire office is nothing but school budgets and information. There's nothing in my office except that. In fact, the rest of the work was piled up. So it, it's just that you just keep going through it and through it and through it. Come up with as much savings as you can. And, and again, let me just stress, you can't appropriate money you don't have. So if, if I sent down $10 million to the city council, that would be good, everybody said send the budget down to them, but that doesn't put them in any better position because there is no 2.5 mil, million dollars or another 8 million dollars. It, it doesn't exist, you, you can't appropriate, appropriate it from somewhere that doesn't exist. So that's the dilemma they were in is, is even if they had the money, there, there's no place to appropriate it from. I can't send down appropriation, saying, transfer this much money from, you know, next year's revenue account to, you know, the schools when that, that money doesn't exist. So it's not a paper thing, it's a, a real thing. Okay, other questions?
Yeah, so, so Dean or Jim, how are we addressing the current fiscal two thousand seventeen expenditures that are being pushed into next year? How are you, are you going to use this money to help pay for that?
Yeah, I think at this point, and Glenn can comment on this also, we're a couple days away from the end of the fiscal year. You know, we're in the process of starting the, the year-end closing. We'll have a better idea as to, we always stay with our financials, but we do, we've been very clear and transparent about the fact that we do have a deficit that we're carrying at the end of the school year. At this point in time, none of these numbers include our school choice numbers. So right now, when we were clear with the mayor and his financial team this afternoon when we met, is the fact that if we do have a, a deficit, we're going to have to take it out of school choice, but it's not a situation where we've already factored it into the budget numbers for FY eighteen.
Just so everybody understands, so at the year-end, everything just stops. We just close out the books, everything stops, unless you have a purchase order that is carried over, everything stops, and we go back and look at all of those accounts to see exactly what was appropriated, what was spent out of that, what's encumbered, carried over to the next year, and then from that point, we'll have a much better understanding of where those dollars might be able to be transferred to pay to reduce the deficit. But we won't know until we sort of shut up, shut those books down, which will be the last day of the month.
Two more weeks.
What's that?
Two more weeks throughout the government. Just to touch upon points that we just made. Mayor mentioned earlier that when we sat down today, we were trying to reduce the difference between the request for transportation funds and the allocation approved by the city council. And when you take out the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that the school committee committed, the superintendent and his administrative team to reduce those costs by, add in about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of additional Medicaid reimbursement funds that we've already collected this year, they'll be into the city's coffers for allocation when they determine free cash, and the mayor has committed to providing that full amount, over a million dollars, not the eight fifty that we originally projected. A little over a million, I can give you the exact number tomorrow, I think it might be a million forty thousand.
So we're getting more than we expected?
More than we budgeted, we were, it wouldn't be very hard to collect that money this year.
Yes, she's.
When we got this, we got a final check last week, it put us on well over the eight fifty.
That's good.
This is what this, and this fed team are working very hard to maximize our revenues.
Right.
But in addition to that, in talking to the mayor and his finance team today, they're looking to also provide us a small pot of money, may only be fifty, fifty-two thousand dollars, but it's reimbursement that the state provides from McKinney-Vento Transportation, that's another item that his team talked to us about providing next year to further reduce. So we're, we're under a half, half a million dollars difference right now between what we proposed, you proposed, excuse me, and the ultimate allocation of what the city appropriated, additional savings to Medicaid reimbursement, and the McKinney-Vento funds. And just to answer your, and I know you'll eventually ask this question.
Why that transition?
That based on what you approved, the priority plus budget, and what we're now looking at, the additional funds that the mayor has offered tonight, one point two million, represents thirty-one percent of the total reduction. So where it was at three point eight million, you reduced to one point two million, that reduction represents thirty-one percent reduction, reduction in the reduction.
Okay.
But through the chair, I just want to clarify that the.
Like checking the checker?
The, the transportation issue isn't just going away here. Yeah, it's a separate thing, we've isolated it, we had that discussion with the mayor today, he agrees, but it doesn't mean that we don't need to tighten up even further than what we already have. So we have anticipated about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of savings, but it could be more savings if we can continue to work with the community over the summer to consolidate routing, consolidate bus stops, et cetera, et cetera. So we have consultants that are working with us on that.
One of the things I think, though, was asked by the committee in the past, and again, don't, we don't need this tonight, but what, exactly what is the cost of picking up the people, the students that were responsible for legal?
Yeah, I, we.
And again, don't derail the meeting.
Fifty-two percent.
Okay. So that might be another conversation when we begin to meet, you know, as our meetings focus towards other things, we might want to begin to talk at least about that. So at least we know what that, so baseline is. This is what we're required as a school committee to transport, and that's not counting special ed or anything.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misinterpreted the question. That of the five point one million dollars that we anticipated spending next year, we asked for four point eight five billion, that we committed to reducing the routing of the big buses by two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Fifty-two percent of the total expenditure for transportation relates to students that are required to be transported in their IEP. So only forty-eight percent is for the big buses that most people assume. Of those big buses, we are not required to transport students within high school, middle school, and, and each student that lives outside, within two miles of any of the elementary schools. That's not what we're looking at, but.
Yeah, make sure we say that, because it's not only. All day tomorrow, I'm going to have mothers who are going to be really angry, more than they already are.
But the, the law, yeah, we talk about the law, the law requires, has requirements. You don't have to transport middle school and high school students. We currently run three tiers of buses, student, they do the high school students, the middle school students, and the elementary school students, and then the, after the, the same thing. If we were to reduce from three tier to two tier, we would save some money, but not substantive, we have a transportation task force still intently in that. We were coming up with proposals, hopefully they'll be placed on available funds. If we need additional funds, we'll, we'll put that before the school committee.
Okay, other questions? Yes?
Are the, I have a couple of questions. Are the consultants still working on that? And do they have a timeline that they'll have some concrete?
We, we told them we would get back, they'd come meet with us after the end of the month, we were kind of busy the past few weeks.
After the end of June. You know, mid-July, I expect to get back to them indeed.
Okay. The other thing is, I, while I appreciate it, I just want to reiterate my misgivings about the Medicaid money going towards transportation and not in the classrooms of the kids who are servicing, and that's what it's reimbursed for, I just wanted to say that. And I'm a little uncomfortable with putting back sports and extracurriculars over teachers, although I understand the importance of them. I have a kid who's at B and so, and who, who wants to join clubs, so I understand the importance, but it, it's just a misgiving that I have. But my question is, because people have been talking a lot about, they want us to be more transparent, so somebody's going to ask this at some point, what the source of the extra funding that you brought to the table was?
We, we haven't totally identified that yet, that's something we're working on, but we feel we can make that up, because they're one-time costs.
Okay.
So we'll know when we, you know, it's going to take some time, and then it might come from a couple of other accounts or whatever, but it'll be one-time, revenue used for one-time costs.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could you just let us know when you figure out?
Yeah, you'll, you'll see the appropriation go through.
Thank you.
And again, you know, the whole idea of, of we're, we're never going to build a sustainable budget if we continue to use one-time money, and that's what I think Beth started off with tonight, is, you know, we've got to fix this. And part of repairing the problem, Susan knows this, you've been here as long as I, right, is, is that temptation to go to, you know, one, you know, using one-time money for fixed costs, and then you do it again next year, and next year, and then pretty soon, you got, you know, you got a big problem again, and so we've got to build this into, we know what our fixed cost, I mean, Glenn and I can sit here right now and tell you what next year's budget's going to be, pretty much. You know, barring the, the state taking any kind of drastic action, and based on their, you know, level here, I mean, part of the problem, Glenn, you know, I mean, we, at our mayor's meeting today with the governor, is, part of the problem, it's a huge problem, is, is the state has cut back on their commitment into education, the city's funding more and more of it, and the gap is getting wider, and, and that's not the point blaming it anybody, it's just, the, the reality is, when people say, how do you get here? Part of it is using one-time money for fixed costs, part of it is the state leaning away from its commitment, because they've got still a half a billion dollars that they haven't, they're not going to be able to close out at the end of the year, I'm not sure they'll be able to give us more money, I hope they can, but, so there are all these other factors that are happening, but if, if we're really going to fix the problem, like, fix it permanently, so that, and we don't go through this every year, we're going to, if we continue to use those one-time funds to pay for fixed costs, so this is a, a huge step in the right direction. It might not seem as it solves all problems, but just the mere fact that we're using one-time money for one-time uses is a huge, huge step, because we haven't done that, right, Susan? I mean, we really haven't. That's part of the problem, I mean, it's, right, I mean, you and Kristen have talked about this numerous times here to the committee, so we're starting fresh, and we're, we've already, we're already improving. It might not be the total answer, but we've already made, taken actions that are positive, that are going to place us in a better spot for next year already.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, any thoughts on this? I mean, I, I don't know how we can word it, but I'm all for whatever, A, B, C, whatever, just giving them the flexibility, but that really needs to come from the superintendent and the principals, is how do they handle that? I don't know what you want to call it, but.
Sue, so, Sue, do we have to, because you guys did a lot of the legwork on the numbers, so you, you understand the need, how the money motions need to be made. Can we word a motion in a way to give the, each building the flexibility to, to choose which is better for them, A, B, C, or a combination, so that it allows each building to do what's best for the students who are in that building?
That's motion.
Oh, well, okay, then that's my motion. Okay, so that's.
Did you get that, Chris?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Can we have the Chantown version? Oh, she's got it, she's got it.
Do you mean to reword that in a more concise way?
We made a motion to give flexibility to the principals to choose a combination of A and C.
Of options C and C?
And C.
Can you add principals slash superintendent?
Principals.
Okay, is a motion, a second?
Sue, second.
Any other questions or comments? Motion second was run by Suzanne.
I just want to say one thing, because I think it's critical that we move on this. I'm glad to see that we put forth a motion, because I learned today that five football players have transferred to Fitchburg. So hopefully, I mean, I know we talk about sports versus education and things.
Chris's heart just dropped.
I think it's, I think it's important, and hopefully, they will consider coming back.
That was my question that I was, you mentioned something about school choice, how much of an impact is school choice, you were saying the money's going.
I can't hear you around that.
Sorry about that.
What happens, John, is if people leave the system, and it's not a good thing, we're not encouraging that, that allows us to take in to the system, that's how it goes. But we're truly trying, I mean, the message we're trying to send here is that this is a good school system, with really good, dedicated people, we've run into this issue, we're committed to fixing it, that, you know, the heart and soul is in, in the buildings and in the schools, it's not with us and the administration, I mean, we play our parts, but the real work goes on inside the buildings, and that's never going to change. My message is, people really should consider, reconsider if they're thinking of leaving the system. If they do, I think the other, the other part, we hope they don't leave, but if they do, that opens up seats for us, as long as we don't, again, create this enormous situation, but that opens up the opportunity to fill those seats and then take in those dollars, so I, I don't know that, I don't think anybody here tonight can tell you the end result of what's going to happen.
You were talking about school choice and how much you're going to be, we are going to be depending on the school choice, and thinking back on this thing, if we have five or how many, I guess basically I'm asking, what would have to be the snapping point where all of a sudden we have more people leaving, more kids leaving?
I mean, we're looking at that. People are saying that these things, we're already at that tipping point.
What, what past the tipping point, what's the snapping point where all of a sudden we realize we're hemorrhaging and we can't stop it, what, do you have a number?
We don't want people to leave, but we can, but remember, we only open up school choice based on our ability to handle it in, in each school, and based on each classroom, and that will continue on, that will, that won't change. So we don't know what the end result will be.
The other question I had was, you know, we're talking about transportation and school bus stops, and I know the issue's always been the bus, the buses stopping at various places. I know on French Hill, in the morning at seven thirty, eight o'clock, the buses are always stopping, but you know, the thing is, I have to tell you, I would just soon have the buses stopped with the stopping now, because there are little kids there when it's, when it's cold outside. You know, no one wants to see a little kid outside, but yes, their parents stay outside with them, you know, but, you know, instead of just corralling the kids in one particular area, that's the thing we have to watch out, because it's going to come back and bite us in the fanny.
So Heather's not here to answer that, because she's the one that sat in on all of that, but if I understood what they were saying correct, when they were talking to us, is that the, the further stops will be for the older kids, and the littler kids would be less impacted.
Like, I, I.
That's how I understood the report that came from the.
Let's leave that open, because that's a whole other.
It's a whole different.
It's all, and those questions will get addressed, but I think for tonight, there's a motion to second on this particular language, and so, anything else that relates specifically to this? If not, there's a motion to second, all in favor? Those opposed? Okay. Any other business superintendent to come before the, the committee's executive session?
Mayor, Rick Marsh here, two twenty-four, Mary, ma'am. There are several councilors here tonight, and I just want to ask a question, do you need to have a special meeting in the city council with an emergency preamble for that money, or can they move forward, because we don't meet out until July tenth?
I, I think, I, I think the, the feeling I will get was that there shouldn't have been a problem, we just need to sort of put our end together, but it will come down regular course, and I don't think I'll hold anything up. I think they're just looking for, you know, letting these people know before they go off and get jobs, and that's why we moved so quickly. So there are a lot of loose ends, so I apologize for that, but everyone's been working non-stop, everything else has been canceled, everything's been put aside, and we're really trying our hardest, we don't want people to leave the system, we don't want to lose good people. You know, you've got to understand, I mean, you know, we, my office is across from the tax office, in the tax collector, if people want to know, and, and we'll explain this, but how are you, how are you over net school spend, how do you get to one point five, one point two million over net school, or over the previous year budget, you're over net school spending, and they were adding money, and we're still, you know, and, and why isn't another system in that predicament? Well, we spend as much per student as Schusbury does, where you work, we're almost equivalent, and, and, or Lunenburg, and they're not going through this, and we are. So that part, I think Beth started off, she's my favorite speaker in the last three months, she said, we got to fix it, people want to understand, they don't want us to blame people, each other, because that's not a fun thing to watch, they don't like to watch, people don't like to watch their leaders fighting amongst each other. So that part's over, I think. I think everybody was frustrated, and how do you deal with frustration, sometimes people say things they don't mean, and then it just gets, it doesn't look good, it's not good theater. So now what people want is to fix this, to figure out what happened, fix it so it doesn't happen again, it can right-size this thing so we can go forward, but we can't until we fix it, and that's what we're doing. And you guys, let me tell you, I, I felt for you tonight, having to sit there and make a tough decision, but as I said, even if you had the ability to add to the budget, there is, there is no money, I couldn't tell you, if you asked the finance committee where that money's coming from, they wouldn't be able to tell you, so you'd be appropriating nothing, you know what I'm saying? And it's, so that's, so anyway, I think we're starting off in a much better tone than we did before, and I think everybody here, we're all calmed down, and I think there are a lot of intelligent people here in the committee, as well as in the city council, and, you know, the administration and Glenn, and we're just principals, everybody, forge forward, that's it, people watching and expect us to lead, that's why they're elected, if we don't, we fail them.
So can you just repeat when the, so July tenth is your next meeting?
Yes, second Monday in July.
Okay, so that's when.
We're also having a meeting too.
Yes, right now it's planned, yes.
Right.
It'll be in by then.
But that's when this will be before them?
If, if all things work out, but you can still go ahead and move forward with notifications. That was the important thing tonight, is just notifications, so that people know. I don't anticipate a problem, that's why I'm comfortable enough to say move forward so that people aren't getting jobs that we're going to hire back, and then we're in a real tunnel. Okay, we're going to go to the executive session?
Could I just say one more comment?
Yes.
You know, as we're finishing up the budget and as we're getting some numbers, you know, some finalized numbers here, I just want to reiterate, you know, I don't think there's anyone at this table that believes that this budget has been, won't be devastating to some extent to our schools, and I don't think there's one person at this table who hasn't thought of all of the amazing employees that are going to lose their jobs or move to other districts through this process. And in the coming days, I hope that we can have discussions about accountability, as well as, I would like to propose, and I've already talked to several of our members on the school committee about this, about hosting a Q and A. I know a lot of members of the public still have questions, and haven't really had a forum in which they could ask questions, so I just wanted to put on the table that we are discussing a format in which we can have, you know, a constructive discussion with the public and try and get you some answers to your questions.